Recycle this book.
Working vacation, I guess they call it.
All righty. Okay, the mics are back on, and TV's back on, and we need to extend the meeting?
I'll make a motion to extend it to, what do you think we need, Guy?
Ten forty-five.
To ten forty-five?
Pretty ambitious, but you can try. Go for it.
I'll make the motion to extend it to ten forty-five.
Second. Hold there, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go for it.
Okay, I'll be quick and hit the highlights. The league policy meetings happened on the week of June fourteen and fifteen. The state, as you know, has adopted a budget. Part of that adoption was, they were borrowing five hundred million dollars from the Prop thirty-nine funds. There is, I think, a sense of kind of relief at the state level in terms of this year's budget. It's been a kind of a calmer atmosphere than I've seen in many, many years. But primarily because of the Prop thirty money that the voters approved a year ago is really the, been the big difference. The governor's budget does have a proposal to eliminate enterprise zones, which is an issue that we've been drawn into, doesn't directly affect us. League of Cities, as you know, is arguing or fighting that proposal. There is CQ legislation that is continuing to work its way through, and from what I understand, will be given serious consideration probably after the recess in August and September. I would characterize that reform, so-called reform legislation as being more at the margins. It's not wholesale changes into the way we know CQ today. It's more stuff that has to do with kind of the structural way that, you know, time periods for responses and various sorts of nuances of the law. I've been participating on a, one of the policy committee to the league in terms of making recommendations. And I think at one point in time, the plan was a little bit more ambitious than it was, than what's currently being drafted by Daryl Steinberg, who is the author of the legislation. There is some discussion at the league level with regards to the federal immigration law and some state legislation that would accompany that. But generally, the league is supporting the National League of Cities policy with regards to immigration reform. It's probably not something that's going to impact us where we're at to any great degree. But I think the bigger cities in the state are probably more involved in that. And then transportation funding, there is continued, I guess, unrest at the city level with regards to the way the state gas taxes are being distributed. So the league is starting, is involved with that in the state comptroller's office. Randy Broh, our public works directors, and his public works committee, policy committee, has been very involved with that. And I know Randy's been himself on top of that issue. With that, I'll answer any questions. In the, as you know, the league meeting is going to be in September. And at that time, I think probably in August, we'll have the various policy initiatives that you'll be asked to vote on before you.
Yeah, you know, if I make comment, you know, so Stuart and I went to the league policy committee meeting up in Sacramento, just three weeks ago. And we, you know, I had been trying to get in touch with Nate. I don't know his last name, but he's, he's a staff person in Jerry Hill's office. So, as you know, Jerry had that bill, you know, to amend the enterprise zones, to make them more fair. And, you know, he wasn't-
Unpredatory.
Right, you know, yeah, I mean, you know, the intent is to bring business to California or to bring business to an area, but not at the detriment of taking it away from another California city. And so, but yeah, you know, we were going to go up early to meet with him, but he had never gotten back to me. He finally got back to me after, you know, checking my emails when we came home. And Jerry Hill decided to drop his bill and get behind the governor's proposal for enterprise zones. And I haven't looked at the details of what the governor is proposing, but I, yeah, the league's not too pleased with it. They were very skeptical about Jerry Hill's bill. You know, in discussions that I had with the attorney that represents our policy committee, you know, I was promoting Hill's bill because I think it was the right thing to do. You know, I mean, granted, it wasn't going to bring VWR back to us, but it's kind of like, you know, when something happens to your kid, you don't want to see another parent go through that same thing. And so, you know, I wanted to support it. I was trying to get the league to get behind it. But now it's, now he's withdrawn it. And I don't know if I can get behind the governor's, you know, proposal. Because I think, I think enterprise zones are good. You know, I need to read the details, you know, of course, of what the governor is proposing. But I think enterprise zones are important forms of stimulating the economy if they're done properly.
Well, the governor, it's a fairly easy read on what he wants to do. He wants to get rid of it.
Yeah, and that was the, you know, that was where the league was going. They said, oh, you know, the governor wants to get rid of it. And they were only focused on the governor. And I guess they felt that Jerry Hill eventually would give in and just support what the governor was going to do and drop his thing.
Guess you're right.
Though, to me, you know, I look at it as like, you know, if you support where Hill was going, to me, you take away the argument where the governor is going, that, you know, just eliminate them. You know, here you're providing sensible amendment to what currently exists. And then just, I don't know, to me, you take, you know, they take one side, and the governor takes the other side, and there's no meeting in the middle, which is unfortunate. And so now, now there's a battle, right?
Yeah, just to be fair to the governor, which isn't necessarily my forte, but his proposal does eliminate enterprise zones, but he's, it does put money into such things as manufacturing credits and also, I think, beefing up the governor's office of economic development and some of the kind of more amorphous tax credits that they could provide to businesses and kind of centralizing that in that office. So I think, from the governor's perspective, he thinks they can come up with better economic development tools than what enterprise zones are.
Yeah.
Agree.
That's about as fair as I can be with it. That was nice of me.
Pretty fair.
Okay. Next item?
So our calendar for the next meeting was going to be the two meetings in August, which are August fifth and August nineteenth. August fifth is particularly important because we were going to have the business license issue, which is time-sensitive in terms of getting it on the November ballot. So, and I could let David speak to this, but David is not available on August fifth. So what we were thinking of proposing to the council was actually having the meeting the last Monday of July in lieu of the August fifth meeting. So you wouldn't have more meetings, but you would just, you would replace August fifth with July twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
And then that would give us plenty of time to meet all the statutory requirements in terms of getting it on the ballot.
If I can explain why August fifth is difficult, and my apologies. My son is getting married and is having his engagement party up in Seattle that weekend and week. So our kids are flying in from all over. And again, I really apologize not being here for that meeting. Had it been anything else, I would have rescheduled and canceled, but this was a hard one. So appreciate your understanding.
Oh, yeah, totally. Actually, I think July twenty-ninth is more appropriate for us in regards to the subject matter that we'll be talking about. I think more time is better.
You be back by then, Ray? Yes. Probably still asleep, but back by then.
Might be jet-lagged.
You getting back the twenty-fifth or twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
I'm, I'm fine with that as long as we have the regular start.
You mean seven-thirty?
Yes.
So we do July twenty-ninth and then Septem-, or September, August nineteenth.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, good. So let's move on to the reports from various council members about countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. And we have a list here, and then now others that people can add. Sustainability Committee, Cliff, if you want to.
Let's see, I, well, I worked till about, I don't know, five, ten-thirty last night the key performance indicators for the document. So we had a meeting, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, where we, you know, looking at the third phase of the document, which is the key performance indicators and identifying how we can monitor the progress of some of the things that are in each principle. Usually, you identify a couple, but I think because of the scale of our project, we'll need at least three or four, maybe five in some principles. I think it's important that, you know, we get those key performance indicators right because that will determine, yeah, the success over the long term for the sustainability goals that we set forth.
And I think for may I add that we had a meeting as a group and decided on the things that we wanted to know more about and where we wanted more indicators. And Cliff has helped with that, too. And so that's all going to be sent to our consultant, who will then be at our next meeting to respond to that. And that's Jeff Cypher's. And I think our next meeting, Stuart, July thirty-first? Right, okay. So that's when we'll, Jeff will be there, and we'll really get our teeth into the key performance indicators. Of course, when we get all this formulated, then naturally it goes back through the whole process and ultimately has to be agreed to by the council. Okay? Finances Committee. You've almost given that report, Stuart. There isn't a whole lot more to say, yeah. Right. Yeah, you agree?
I agree.
Good job.
Okay, two by two.
Well, we met with Jefferson Union High School District and basically discussed the bus issue. We want to get out of the bus service, and they don't want to get back in it. So we are going to have to do some creative thinking on this in the future. Really, that's where it's at. They don't, they don't want to take the bus, bus back on. And, you know, we have to decide what we want to do, what direction we want to take. How do we want to do it? How creative do we want to try and be, you know? I mean, we might look at, I mean, this is something we're going to have to really talk about, I think, on a subcommittee level of looking at some different options. And right now, we just basically got, she would like to, but we can't, you know, even everything that's going on with them, you know?
Damn.
What we're going to do.
In effect, the dilemma continues, huh?
Yeah, you know, we talked about, you know, the property tax revenue that the city of Brisbane and the district as a whole provides to the school district. You know, the, you know, the, our school district, all the properties provide about four and a half million dollars or so to, to the Jefferson Union High School District. But in reality, that money really doesn't go to the school district because they're funded by the state, you know, because they're like a revenue limit type, or they changed the, I forgot what the new, the new word is. You're not revenue limit anymore, but it's something else. But you're still being, you're still getting more money from the state than what you would get if you just were solely surviving on your property tax revenue. So really, what the school district receives from us is sixty-three hundred dollars per student. So, you know, I think we have about eighty kids in Brisbane, hundred and twenty total in the school district. So, I mean, really, when you look at, say, just Brisbane alone, you have eighty kids, and they're getting sixty-three hundred bucks. I mean, it's, you know, it's about half a million dollars. And, you know, that money, you know, you got to, you got to educate those kids. And so when you really, you work it out all the way down the line, they just don't have the money to put in for the school bus. And so-
Weird, weird thing, we did ask them about some statistics. This really didn't have nothing to do with the bus, but it had to do with the schools themselves. And, you know, the schools that are, Los Angeles, Center City, this year are getting like eleven thousand nine hundred dollars per student, where Jefferson's getting, what, sixty-three hundred to sixty-six hundred dollars per student? And there's a big differential. I think it's kind of like flip-flopped, you know, gone the other way. Maybe with good purpose, but, you know, to get those schools up to where they're supposed to be, they're putting a lot of money into them, at least the governor budget. But we asked about the specific schools, Terranova, Oceana, Westmore, and Jefferson. Funny thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they said that Jefferson is actually getting more kids into college than the other schools. Is that what you heard? And it was, had to do with the, they actually have a staff person who is helping kids do the applications and stuff like that. Now, that's not necessarily saying that the scores are higher, but they're actually getting more students into college than-
Yeah, I think percentage-wise, I think, you're at four-year universities.
Yeah. So it's pretty interesting.
Yeah, yeah, you know, a lot of, a lot of universities, I'm starting to learn because, you know, my kid is a sophomore, kind of becoming a junior, and you start to learn those things. And, you know, a lot of universities are looking for kids that have it a little bit harder than kids that come from wealthier school districts. So, but you need to have someone who's, who knows the rules of the road. And Jefferson has got like a full-time person. Who's, that's, that's their job, is to make sure these kids get all their requirements in place.
So that's where the bus money goes, huh?
That's, you know, the overall budget, yeah, you know, I mean, it's, yeah.
Well, funny thing, too, is the new charter school, the Shasta, Chester School is going to be located off, right across the street from Daly City City Hall, which is really right in the middle between Jefferson and Westmore. So it's, it's going to be interesting. So I don't know if the school's dynamics are also changing, too, because it's very difficult to get into Westmore because of the dense population in that specific area, is very dense, you know?
Yeah, desirability as well for Westmore.
I said Westmore, did I?
Yes, yeah, 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 for Westmore, yeah.
So, but in regards to the bus, you know, we bought the big banana on that one.
Well, it's hard to go back on payments once you start making them. It's hard to cut programs, and it's hard to convince somebody else that it's their responsibility.
Well, they didn't really understand what the history of it was in the beginning either. So we explained that to them also. Because actually, you were on the council when the genesis, when, when the superintendent actually came and was, you know, spouting the sports program, you know, see if we would be able to donate ten thousand dollars. And then later, we kind of put it into resolution that we would give up sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, but they'd be used for advanced placement classes, computers, you know, computer labs, extended library hours in Terranova, because, you know, most of Brisbane's students went there, and a late bus for those that wanted to play athletics, athletics. So that was it. And now it's, you know, with all the budget cuts and everything that happened, it morphed into bus.
It's all transportation, yeah, nothing for academics.
So, you know, I think we'll have to sit down, you know, sometime throughout the year, just kind of do some brainstorming and see what other options or ideas or, you know, ways we can, ways we can do it. You know, we can certainly request this of the legislature.
You know, in some ways, you know, it's kind of like, like healthcare. The cost keeps going up, right? But we keep, you know, ponying up the increases. So, you know, it might, you know, come to that point where we're going to have to ask the community to kick in a little bit. Because we have not asked the community, I don't think, ever since we took over funding the bus, where we've increased rates on the citizens, correct?
We increased rates last year, yeah.
Oh, did we increase rates last year?
A little bit.
A little bit?
No.
Yeah, and the only reason the rates increased is because, see, we got a flat amount that's budgeted, but so the bus service went up, and the only way to do it was to increase the fees because we're-
Okay, so I, okay, I forgot about that.
This is what we're going to donate.
Okay.
Yeah, and the cost of fuel was a lot higher this year, so.
I'm going to make a motion to extend the meeting till eleven o'clock.
Second.
Hold there, please say aye.
Aye. Okay.
You're right, it was aggressive. Ambitious.
So I'm hoping that the two by two also meets with the Brisbane colleagues because obviously, as you all know, there's a big deal going on there now, too. And so it might be good to, you know, keep in communication there.
Mm-hmm, yes.
No, absolutely. I mean, we have periodic meetings with them. What do we meet, usually like twice a year? Yeah.
Say, we should have a meeting coming up. It's been a while since we all met.
Okay, the Baylands Community Survey Subcommittee, that's Cliff and me. I can report quickly, you don't mind?
Okay.
We, we have a proposal from the survey company that we've been working with, and it came pretty close to what we had in mind. And we had a meeting and decided to propose a number of modifications, relatively minor. And I think the big decision we made was that, you know, the mail with online option made sense to us rather than person-to-person, because there's a very big difference in cost. But the actual contract will be coming back to the full council probably sometime in August. Probably the meeting in August, during that July, or August nineteenth. And so we'll all get a chance to look at it. But I think, I think you'll like the firm and what they proposed doing.
Yeah, and when it's brought back for the council, Clay, we were also talking about laying out the schedule for how we'll put together the survey for the council.
Right.
Yeah. The proposed schedule.
Proposed schedule.
We know how that goes.
But we'll do our very best to lay out a schedule.
Yeah, right. Won't be like the draft DIR. Okay, so move on. Oh, let's see now, okay, any other reports, like CKAG, or?
We did it, did I report that last time?
We haven't had any reports for a while because we never got to this part of the agenda.
Trying to remember something I wanted to tell you. Don't forget, we'll move on.
All right.
Yeah.
I second that.
So any other?
Oh, I know what it was, is we did have a presentation there from, not the Bay Area Open Space Council, but it had to do with the waterways. What they're looking at how to deal with rising tides, so.
Sea level, rising sea level?
Yeah, sea level rise, so. Which is pretty interesting. I really liked the presentation. I won't go in, I'd have to think about it a little bit. But I think it might be a worthwhile presentation to have for the Open Space and Ecology Committee. Yeah.
So, did you hear that, Stuart? Okay.
Yeah, and it's, Dave Pine is on the board. And so he would probably be the contact person, or, I wrote, I wrote it down. I don't have my notes with me, so I can give you all that info.
Okay. Any other countywide?
Yeah, well, last week I had the OES and also Potentia Congestion Relief Alliance, but I was out of town on both of those. They were on Thursday. So I don't know who my backup is on that. We know Sherry? But it was kind of like, wasn't going to work. Because that, that one's at eight-thirty in the morning.
Right. Okay, so, shall we move on to this category? Okay, so the, under C is communications. The first one, the AT&amp;T outage, the reason I have that here is because we got a lot of requests from citizens. And of course, that was a couple of weeks ago now. But as we all know, the AT&amp;T service went down, the DSL service. And what was annoying to a lot, and for some people, it was for three, four days.
Almost a week?
Yeah. What was really annoying to a lot of people is that when you call customer service, they denied that there was a systemic problem, which in fact, it turned out to be. And they were getting people to, you know, check all this stuff in their systems, and that people would spend hours on the phone. And they, some of them had to go out and buy modems. And it turned out that the problem was within the AT&amp;T system. So there were a lot of people unhappy, and a lot of people changed to Comcast and so forth. So anyway, the quest was, most people realize we have no regulatory authority whatsoever, if anybody does. But their request was to write a letter to AT&amp;T expressing our unhappiness with the level of service. And maybe that, if it comes from the city, they'd pay more attention. I don't know whether that's true or not. But anyway, that was the request. And so I guess my request to the council is, do you want to do something like that or not?
I'd be in favor of it. I just got mine fixed today. And if you have a digital phone and your DSL's out, your phone don't work.
Is that right?
Yeah. So I don't know, Stuart, you probably noticed when you called that my answering machine would go on on the first ring, because I never heard nothing. It was kind of nice not to hear the phone ring for a couple of weeks, so.
So, so on that, I think that's a good idea to write a letter, just to, to express our displeasure as a city. But when you're, you said your digital phone goes out. I heard that there's a backup system for the phone that's supposed to last for so many hours. Is that not the case? Or is that just for nine-one-one?
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it is. I don't think that's the case because, of course, you know, I don't, I don't really know. I didn't even know it was out for days. Not like I used a phone. You know what I mean? I'm using cell phone and stuff like that mostly. So house phone is, like you find out days later. Matter of fact, I didn't even know it was out until we saw it on the agenda a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yes, my phone hadn't been ringing, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so is this a consensus, or we don't need a motion on that, do we? Consensus is okay? All right, good. Okay, move on to the Viewpoint Homeowners Association letter. We got this big, long letter from Tony Averios, who's a Viewpoint resident, and summarizes some of the things that happened in the homeowners association meeting. Actually, what, I wanted to take advantage of his letter to report, you know, I've been going at my request to the various homeowners associations. And I've already been to Altamar and an issue having to do, as we know, with their dealings with the scavengers we're trying to work on. Then this was a meeting with Viewpoint, and this coming week, I'm meeting with Landmark, Board of Directors. But the one at Viewpoint was particularly interesting because they really advertised it. And there were actually thirty-five people there. So it was a really good turnout, and I was basically the program. And everybody was saying, this is the first time that anybody has done that. Wouldn't this be a great annual occurrence? So I guess the main- So I guess the, the main thing I want to bring to everybody's attention is it really is a very excellent venue for contacting the people who live on Northeast Ridge and feeling a connection to the city. And so I was just gonna suggest that, you know, it's something the mayor should do every year. And they were all very happy. The board was very responsive there. Everyone was really pleased that, that I was there and answering their questions and getting their feedback. And it really was a very successful meeting, I felt. And so I think it's a, something we should continue.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's smart.
And, you know, Tony mentioned some of the things that are problems and we see the letter and some of them we're addressing. But I do want to point out that, that there were some really positive statements made as well, particularly about the police department. They just think the police department is fantastic. It's very responsive, they calm, they're gracious, you know, they handle problems, you know? So they're really pro Brisbane police. So that's something maybe we could pass on to Lisa and the department. And there was, that was the most positive reaction I've gotten to the police department anywhere. I mean, they were real, put it on. I guess they had some problems, you know, they have a spa and there were some problems with teenagers from this part of town going over there, jumping the fence and the police had to go and, you know, several times, I guess. But they were, they handled it very well and everything was happy from the viewpoint perspective. So anyway, that was the really positive thing besides the meeting itself going on. So Clark, I hope you put this on, on your agenda and.
Well, two things gotta happen, three things gotta happen first.
Yeah, I know. I'm aware of that.
Three, I gotta get appointed mayor.
All these things, all these contingencies, but presuming certain things happen and as we would anticipate, please put that on your agenda.
Okay.
Okay, League of California Cities voting. I guess it's usually the mayor and the mayor pro tem or our voting delegates if they are planning to attend. And I am planning to attend.
This one's in Sacramento, right?
Yeah, right, in September.
Yeah, I'm planning on going then.
Okay, do we need a motion for that? No? Okay, because we have a form that Sherri has to send in? Yeah, okay. All right, okay, that takes care of that. Then the city selection committee, it's kind of interesting. It's this Friday and, and since I'm about to take off, then I asked Clark if he could represent the city. He agreed to do so, but we have a couple of decisions to make. I don't know whether you noticed or not. The, the one that's really, the only one that's really competitive is, is the LAFCO position. And there are two people running for that, Alan Alafano from Half Moon Bay and Wayne Lee from Millbrae. And I had, I got a call from Alan Alafano and I heard him give a presentation at the meeting in East Palo Alto. So he's quite eagerly seeking this position because of all the special districts around the coast. There are a lot of special districts on the coast. So he's seeking that position. And of course Wayne Lee was after it last time, but he lost to, you know, Nadia Holliver. Then of course subsequently passed away, so that's why the position is open.
Yeah.
I think he lost to Pedro.
Hmm?
To Pedro. Nadia was.
No, no, he was running for LAFCO.
Yeah, yeah, and.
No, Pedro was.
MTC.
Yeah, that was MTC.
No, no, it wasn't MTC.
Not MTC.
But he ran against Pedro and he, he.
ABAG, wasn't it?
Because Nadia is also, he was ABAG because Nadia is from Millbrae. And two, two council members from the same city would not run against each other.
Anyway. No, Wayne Lee did run for another, you're right.
He did, he lost to Pedro for something and maybe it wasn't.
The reason the position is open is because Nadia passed away. A LAFCO position.
Right, it is.
A LAFCO position is open, yes.
And so Wayne Lee is now, I guess he's running to replace his colleague, I guess is another way.
Yeah, so he's seeking an appointment and he's seeking a reappointment.
So you got two people, and then you got, you got a strange thing because you have two ABAG reps and there only seems to be one person running. The other person is also from South City on ABAG.
Right.
Garabino, so it's Garabino and Gonzalez. And he, he hadn't put in a letter, but he got elected to LAFCO last time.
Garabino did.
Yeah, right. So he may not be running for ABAG, so there's, that's an open position. And Wayne Lee is also, he's running there for the alternate for ABAG. So my thinking was that if Wayne Lee goes for the ABAG along with Pedro Gonzalez, if he does that, then that would make it more sense to support, say, Alan Alafano for LAFCO. But I don't know whether that's all gonna happen. So that's just, you know, I don't, I think unless we have a strong feeling one way or the other, you know, Alafano versus Lee for LAFCO, then we can kind of leave it up to the judgment of the, of our representative as to how the dynamics.
I know, I know Wayne, I don't know Alan.
Yeah.
I, I've worked with Wayne and, and like him, but I don't know Alan.
So I don't know, I mean, it, it just depends on how things work out because at this point, it, it's kind of strange the way it's set up. That you don't have anybody for the second ABAG position.
I think, didn't we get a special note on that that?
Just not.
I'm gonna play it by ear.
That there was, that, that we had a revision this afternoon, I believe, and I don't have my. Okay. Okay.
Dan, you know, whatever you want to do, Clark.
That's kind of what I was thinking, let it leave it up to Clark's discretion.
Doesn't matter to me. You know, I know about those guys, they, they seem like they would do a good job.
Yeah, I'll see what, what the thing, I, I, for some reason I thought Rich was already on ABAG. That seat isn't necessarily up.
I think it, it is interesting that the two ABAG positions are held by council members from South City. And I guess both of them are up.
Oh, okay.
And so obviously Pedro is running for reelection, but so far anyway, Rich Garabino has not asked to be reelected.
Maybe.
He was, he was disappointed the last time or the time before. He was, he was, no, that was LAFCO, right?
But he, he's on LAFCO now.
He's on LAFCO now, yeah, yeah.
So he may have decided to go for LAFCO and not ABAG. But then that leaves that position open.
Well, let me see what, what transpired.
Yeah, so there could be a lot of interesting dynamic there. And so I think if we just give Clark discretion to do what makes sense. It's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Oral communications number two. Since there is no member of the public in the audience, city manager wants to make an oral communication.
I'll make a motion to.
I, I do have just a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Sorry, but we had the bullet.
Oh, yeah.
Fundraiser on Friday, it was a big success. We sold out for that event. And the Lions Club, they, they ordered just the right amount of steaks. Just, I mean, it was just right down to the, to the last steak, seriously. And, but people had a great time, you know? Clay was out there with his wife and, yeah, it was fun. They had a band, you know.
How many people?
Music and, I'd say we had, I don't know, 108 people, 110, something like that. Yeah, yeah, we added it all up, it was 130 people, you know, with Lions and the band and whoever else, you know, was helping out staff. So, yeah, it was good, but, and then of course, you know, it was, it was nice. You know, all of us went to Steve's memorial and I thought the two of you did a great job with your speeches. And, yeah, it was just nice to remember Steve, you know, in that way. And, you know, it was interesting to know that, you know, that Steve is, he served the most years of any council member and he was mayor five times and, you know, and it was, you know, part of some pretty major decisions that affected our community and so, you know, I just hope that, you know, you know, we can recognize Steve, you know, perhaps in some other fashion. And so I don't know if, if, how we set that up, is it through an ad hoc subcommittee or whatever? But it, it'd be nice to recognize Steve with something that he had a significant, you know, hand in, in this community. You know, for all the years of service that he provided.
About everything in the last 20 years or something.
Yeah. You know, how, how we do that, I mean, I know that isn't a tradition of ours. You know, we have a community park, the community library, the community center garden. But I think it would be nice to, to recognize Steve in, in some sort of fashion that way.
Yeah, I would say it was probably about 250 people there. It was really.
It was at maximum capacity.
Yeah. It was a very wonderful service, it was very well done. And I think that Wendy is gonna take some of the remarks that were made and have, have them in Brisbane Star. So we'll do that, but something else we can.
Yeah, so.
Think about what's appropriate.
Yeah, so how, how would we do that, Clay? What was your recommendation?
Well, there's probably a couple of ways we could do it. We, we could certainly have a council subcommittee. We might want to reach out to the Waldo family and see if they're, they had any thoughts in that way. And, you know, which, which I could do and then report back to a council subcommittee.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I mean, I, I think it'd be nice that the two of you were on that, that subcommittee. You, you're on facilities and, and you've had the most experience with Steve. If you guys mind doing something.
Oh, the two of us?
Yes.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Ju-, July 29th.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, I think we got three seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
I am out of here now.
Ray, have a.